That.
And lots of times. His birthday is single two times.
I sound tired of this late, but.
We never.
Yeah, I do too.
Sam following this. He is great. He's very patient.
If he could.
But help last time.
Yeah.
Fourth time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have here.
Those are right, but what do you think that it wants me to do?
Yeah, I think I'll also. But maybe I should be more than.
Everybody has to have a piece of this. You like to hang on it? You like to hang?
No, personally. I'm here.
Thank you.
And then. Yeah, and so.
You shut down.
Want some to me? Delicious.
And did you?
How about us? Extra. Got it.
Can you see it? Do you like to hear this?
Can you hear a flag?
Mike, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, I'm not on a microphone.
Hey, I I can hear you. I'm in the middle of working on my net, so I I'm not gonna say much, and if I do, it's gonna take me a minute to get unmuted. Trying to get ready for the opening moment.
Okay, we just wanna make sure you can hear us.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're they're doing sixteen hour openers, five AM.
It's like that's better.
I'm late. I'm impressed by it. I didn't sell it today yesterday. You obviously believe that's in front. But you had a good day, so you deserve it.
So we need all home quick. So even. This is Kristen Smith. This is Aaron. He's our new um fire marshal.
Oh, awesome.
Good to meet you.
She's the mayor.
Welcome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then everyone else is gonna be on the phone.
Or just one and then.
Dave?
No, Aaron is not called. What will we missing?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, he's not.
Not attending.
I can.
Have a word with. I knew there was another.
He's.
Kind of in charge of the whole thing.
Tomorrow.
Like tomorrow.
Tonight.
Too.
Charging one on Winston's.
Yeah.
He's at a memorial service that can excuse that.
Our service is tomorrow.
Yeah, for Aaron Hanson.
No, no, or.
Or disaster.
For ten. But they said that. This is part of it.
I'm sure it is. I'm.
The brothers have curated all of his records.
Who's prepping storage moments. And they're dedicating the twenty-five lot. At one.
Okay, everybody?
We'll be back morning.
Yes, we're ready. Okay.
They're calling meeting to order. Six oh two and have the clerk call the roll. Okay, um Mayor Smith?
Here.
There are Adams?
Here.
Eric Hanson is absent.
It's a pin spot?
Here. Mike, you don't have to answer. I know you're here. Mike, the closer to zone.
Yep. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Wendy Rainey?
Here.
Kathy Sherman?
Here.
Dave Zastrow is absent. That's the four month council for this work session.
Okay, so. Um, the work session topic is to get an update on the city's financial um. Uh, on our, the status of our revenues and expenses budgeted versus actual for Q one and Q two for twenty twenty-five. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to staff. Go. Lead us through this.
Over to Cheryl. I I think we have it pretty well laid out. It's kind of a thing like. We, I think we have some known hits. Um. One is out. The forced receipts is in only as thirteen thousand and stuff.
Yes, that has been received already. The the um school bond debt reimbursement will be received later this year, but um. I outlined what they expected deficit on that revenue would be um in the memo. Those changes. We have already heard about, so it shouldn't be too surprising. Um. Expenses do look like they're on track where we would normally see them. Um. So I didn't really highlight too much there. There's a few things that aren't showing up yet, but it's because. We just got on and off the door, so that's good. Um. I will now switch back over to reconciling and doing the monthly entries, but you'll see like um. Admin allocated funds aren't showing up yet. That will happen on. We know that those will come in close to what we budgeted because we we do control it internally. Um. But so the rest of it just kind of gives a picture of how things are turning out. If there are. More questions or even, you know, feedback for what you would like to see in this. I, yeah.
Next.
Yes, I have some questions. Um, and thank you. I thought this was very good and very helpful, so and.
Yeah.
Um, I just is up at the top. It says basically your twenty-four is that is quarter one and quarter two, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Through quarter two, which is.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to kind of give you another um comparison.
Yeah.
Where we were.
Fantastic. It was very interesting to see. Um. Can I just run through my questions real quick?
Of course.
Would that be all right? Um. So business licenses, that's just. We're not not up there maybe? It's on the first page.
Um, those do start. We fill them out for the next year, like December and December, so they fill them in.
That's right. I remember that now. So refreshing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. I thought that. A lot of the revenue looked pretty good. Actually, we seem to be ahead in a lot of places. Um. The state dispatch services, that was very high.
Yeah.
Already.
I did notice that, and I'm gonna be looking a little bit closer into that one. Um. Just to see if something else has made its way into that revenue.
Okay, this is more about that and.
If I might on that, just if we were gonna.
Go ahead.
I'd rather piggyback off my item. Is there any known new contracts around dispatch, especially? Okay. Perfect. I know. They're always looking for new contracts and things like that, so just curious. Thank you.
Um, my other comment was that the dog licenses are way up and. Well, good too. That's a good dog work going on. Um. And you could really tell we're lacking our DMV personnel.
And we will be coming from the entire DMV trip.
Yeah, so. Understood. Um. And then let me just. Oh. And so I got to recreation. I was like, wow, and I'm glad you just walked in, Samantha. My goodness, um. I think. Crack is pulling their weight. Um. And I was just gonna ask what the darkness lane this is.
Yes, um, that uh during our storm in January, I think it was, the big windstorm, uh, the pump track received a lot of damage. This was um where we put the funds from insurance for that, so.
Okay.
Not a normal revenue, but that's where it ended.
Um. And also I was just gonna comment on Cordova's center revenue, cuz. We might have underestimated them. It shows the importance of building that position. And are the donations, is that? Um. At the point?
Yes, it was um through the community.
Yes, and the Cordova Center has a community foundation. Alaska.
We need.
Foundation. No, and we are going to. Put a rubber.
Um, yeah.
Runner down the stairs.
Okay.
Because stripping and painting that, I mean, yeah, we're already going to do that again, and we just said it years ago.
Okay, so.
And I think that's all I have. So thank you. It was really useful.
And it looks like also the rapists are on track or under budget.
Councilor Adams?
Um, I have some one question. Um, wholesale of property. And what did we sell that made it six thousand one three hundred percent over?
Where is it?
On the first page. The impound lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. It was paying.
But that will be used to pay for the upgrades at the. Bailor for the new impound lot. So we sold it impound lot.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're a fucking fan. That's what Randy says.
Um, so where does this recent development leave us with the truck? Is it totaled out? The refuge truck?
Uh, I would imagine we don't have a. Insurance. We will put it in for insurance. We haven't. I mean, we have no dumpster trucks right now. Um. I reached out to Valdez. Where they have one we can borrow, but we can't get it on the ferry because it's booked.
Oh, geez.
Till next Thursday. Um, so we're trying to explore over at other avenues. Um, we have the ferry ticket booked. We could put it on the ferry on Tuesday, but. It's two feet short out to Tidlake, and I'm not gonna leave Valdez's refuse truck into Tidlake for five days. That'd be a person sick with them.
Well, nah, it's just now.
Yeah, so we could have it here quicker anyway, because we could do it Thursday night or Friday. So. Um, just not with the risk. We are looking at landing crafts too to kind of get an idea if we can. Get it here sooner, cuz it's it's gonna be tough. We got a book. We got the box boxes, like where the recycle goes. At the canneries right now. Um, we have some bigger. Um. Painters, but at like the school, we're asking them with the programs that. Their stuff in cans or something, and they store them in that shed, and we'll come pick them up. And we're just sure we'll do what we can do. We'll reach out to departments. Buildings and stuff, which is, yeah.
As a driver, is he okay?
Todd is okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but.
Yes.
He's okay.
Yes. Just a little bruise up.
Here. What what happened?
Uh, they're in the steering. Uh, they're they're on last. Uh, right past the some. Right before the.
Right before.
Um, it looks like something in the steering broke, but I guess the tire right now is through the side of. You just see some of the steering just goes. And then it was like spinning.
Oh.
On there and. Ended up going off the side of the road.
To the right?
To the left. Like you were saying, on the water side.
Yeah, but there was no water. There's no waters.
Cow.
Into the ditch.
Wow.
Where there was a boulder.
Yeah.
I was too bad. Um, so he is okay, but I'm pretty sure the truck is done. So we were working interns. And we're moving through the process, just trying to get. Get it figured out. Yeah.
And this is like the big dump truck, like garbage.
Both of our dumpster trucks down. The new one. Has a um issue with the, that's what's in the packet.
Okay, that's.
Yep, so that's the newer one. This is the older one, at least two thousand and two truck. Um, that's been some. That's in my house, I just wear that.
As we're talking about it. Happening yesterday, I swear. I saw it driving yesterday morning when I went out and about.
Yeah.
It's a perfect bit.
Yeah, it's today afternoon.
Wow.
That's what all the sirens were. In the afternoon, yeah. There's a couple of calls yesterday.
So there are some dumpsters, you're saying, that are able to be handled with a different kind of truck?
Not dumpsters.
Oh.
So you know where you drop 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 off the cardboard, recycle, and the glass recycle, those are boxes for the hook truck? And so those we can pick up with the hook truck, which is new, so it's gonna be good. And we can haul that out and dump them, and so we put those in the canneries. Um. And they're just trying to reach out to restaurants and anywhere that food is coming, so we can, we'll just pick up as much as we need to, as often as we need to with a little trucks. And then once we do get another dumpster truck here, the tech is coming. Uh. Monday. May's to fix, if everything is moving. Parts are here. He's very fine. The parts are all there. He was here, so he's already seen what he needs. Should, you know, missing parts. And then we go on the interior for drugs, we get. Especially if we can't get that.
Is it worth putting out a a public service notice to say, I mean, I'm thinking like a small house like mine, I can deal with holding trash for. Extra few days, but is it worth putting out a noticing, take your trash to the bailer if you?
Uh, I think Kevin is working on that. Most of today was spent just trying to figure out if we could get that. We were so excited to have a dumpster truck and then.
Yeah.
So let down. Yeah, it's been a very up and down thing.
Yeah.
So, um, but Kevin is working on that. They're just, they're just trying to get things figured out on how it's related. I mean, certainly if you. They take their trash to the bailer, that would be simple, but the routes will get ran for residential.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then for this lower one for Valdez, they have like, we need it back by this time, or it's.
Uh.
Until we need it, you can use it.
Yeah, we we didn't go into a lot of detail this morning. We just wanted to, you have it, and we. When can we get it here? And so we'll I'll talk about that again. Um. So, yeah.
As we know, the insurance process is long.
Well, and the. A two thousand and two truck. It's nothing about insurance either.
No.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Hey, can I make a comment here real quick?
Of course. Also, member Middleton.
I've been trying to follow up. Got a lot of things going on here in the back deck, but uh. It might be worth reaching out to Pizzlack to see if you have a calendar available.
Yeah. There. Two people on my list in the Pizzlack and um.
B M L?
Uh, B M L doesn't go to Valdez.
The village.
The one.
Corolla Construction.
Corolla Construction. Corolla Construction. Those are my two.
Yeah, Corolla Construction's got a lot of fish gear on their boat right now, but you don't know.
Yeah, I. I didn't know what Corolla Construction would do with that any. But yeah, they're on my list, so we'll see how that goes. Um.
How about these big crab boats?
Well, they're kind of busy.
They are.
Guessing they're not gonna communicate about that.
Probably not. A lot of them.
So I talked to Sam, so they will figure out what we hate again, so they need to come to Valdez.
Yeah.
Something we put on airplane. Maybe they'll start.
Could they swing it?
See one thirty.
Get some training opportunities, but by the time you get that coordinated.
Yeah. I might be retired.
Right, sure.
Those um, those kind of are being very hard. You didn't figure it out.
I have what may be uh a dumb question, but I. Under other governmental, there's D O R, Department of Revenue. This business, share tax. I mean, it seems like there's a few different. Sources of fisheries revenue. And I'm wondering if you could just list them out.
That's the big one from the state, so.
So this is the share of the raw, what we call the raw fish tax?
The top one there, yeah.
Yeah.
And then herder down in that section. Nope.
Yes.
Herder down C C C D won't eat.
Okay.
And it's um.
Under other governmental on page two.
It's also from the state, but it's on.
Of the vertical, which is.
The big one, the million dollar one.
Yeah, you were right, Deborah. Go back to that other that other packet. That's your guess.
Yeah, yeah.
And. Um, why do those pages look different? Is it?
Looks like some issue. She gave a summary one also. This is in your packet of the detail.
Should mean as.
You also had the old one.
Right.
So throw that away. Okay. Um, the raw fish tax, the million dollar one is. That, you know, all the processors pay to the state. The state keeps it and lets a bunch of interest fund it, and then takes ten months to give us. Maybe not ten, but they get it at the end of March, and we don't usually get it till October. But they did pass something in June of this year that said that the state's gonna get some back for her.
Well, that's what that delayed payment legislation was about.
I'm gonna see if that happens, but then the tiny one, which. Is about fisheries management areas across the whole state. I think there are eighteen or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
What's the, I guess, the smaller one, the bigger one, like what?
Oh, I see. The G C C E D one, line item one oh one, three oh two, four oh two, three oh. And then the big one is other governmental D O. Million dollars. The shared fisheries business tax is what happens outside of a city or a borough. And then gets divvied up depending on. I forget if it's poundage or value of fish caught in your fisheries management area. So the lion's share of that every year goes to like Dutch Harbor and Out West crab fish. So our number is has been a little bit dwindling. But a good pink year makes that a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, the revenue one is the big.
For item one of the four zero two one five, a share of new cap. So what is that?
That's the commu- community assistance program for the state. Um.
I don't know if I really have ever. Not a good explanation, I don't know.
Yeah, we just have to kind of prove to them that we're doing things right. They ask us if we've held an election. They asked us if we. Did a budget, did an audit each year, and then.
Basically a functioning government.
Well, fine.
And here's.
Here's some money, you're the function of the government.
We can just apply, so. Applications.
Is it a consistent? Number every year or kind of goes up or is?
Um.
Expect.
I think it fluctuates. Maybe not as much as fish tax, but it does fluctuate.
And it seems as though they give us what we're going to get before we do budget.
Right, so we do it exactly.
So we knew.
Yeah, they announce, but. No, that was.
Oh, no.
And then last year, and then what we budgeted for this year, just based on what we got last year, because it.
I know, but you're showing the year-to-date was exactly what we voted.
No, the year-to-date is thirteen thousand. Or, oh, I'm sorry, I'm down a line.
Right.
No.
See?
Yes.
I did know that one. Like in October, November.
And it looks like we get paid out at period spend too, because last year we get through it by Q two, and this year by Q two, we have the amount.
It might have been that it paid out earlier prior year, so it hit the other fiscal year.
Oh.
The five, one three.
Okay.
And or just later in the year, hopefully.
By Q three or Q four. No, we have it.
Yeah, we're good this year.
Um, what is pensions to you?
Uh, this is the. What's some bright warnings you use for?
Fake news?
No, I mean, it's kind of fake. It's it's from the historically, the first pension fund was. Under underbund managed.
Yes.
Um, we'll go with that. And so.
Was that the debacle this year?
No.
This was the debacle in like the early two thousands or the thundies?
It's on the.
Because there was another one in the shoot.
Oh.
Well, it's always.
For teachers.
Kind of, okay.
Yeah.
This is always kind of discussed during the legislature, but this is um. To make up for that, they are charging municipalities. More, and then they give us some of it back. To try and get that um deficit net.
Yeah.
And how it was seen as managed.
What Aman told me was, or told us. Um, was that there was a time when. Municipalities, all the contributions they made into Pers was tracked individually, so that the city of Cordova would know what they put in, and it would come out to the city of Cordova. And at some point, somebody said, oh, let's just blend it. Let's just put it all in together. And then they lost track of who was putting in and how much who was taking out. I mean, it was like an actuarial nightmare. Yeah. And that's when they kind of got lost a hold of what they really needed to be collecting. And instead of the state saying, we will make up the gap, they said, oh, we're gonna tax all of you more. So.
Then then I think this is kind of their acknowledgement that they shared in it, and so they do give us a portion of that. They give us credit for it.
So you mean the twenty-two percent number used to be a lower than that percent?
Mm-hmm, eighteen.
Yeah.
And so will. This be in subsequent years as well, but we'll see. This, or is it gonna lay itself out?
We did have a few years that did not get funded, and um, and then they made up for it later. Uh, so it's it's hard to.
Sounds pretty precious.
I think the goal is we thirty-nine.
It's to be caught up, will be caught up.
That's the goal.
So each year, it's kind of. It can be up through. Discussion.
In the legislature.
Yeah.
So it's something we need to keep talking about every year with students and.
And if it's um, yeah, if they're talking about it, we need to add pay for it, which does really help with that.
Yeah. Especially since it's their mistake. That's crazy, like, yeah, the hospital, the hospital place pays more also.
Every purse.
Yeah.
Um, another round.
Yeah, please. Like, um. Under planning, just it's a small amount, but I see a negative in revenue, that's what I'm saying, catch my eye, other revenue under planning.
It is, but it should kind of explanation of that.
It's uh four eight zero one four on the revenue side under planning. Other revenue.
When they pay for stuff that goes into a land sale and then we get paid back? And we do pay things out of a revenue line, that would be weird.
What?
And then.
You see, so at the bottom of.
About enough to read.
Three.
Trying to get her accounting system to see if I can.
Okay.
While you're.
See that? Yeah.
Keep asking something else and. And then I know we have the deficits that were outlined, forced receipts. This allocated administrative costs, was that a one thing last year? Have we not received that gross funds yet? We're showing zero for.
That is one of the things from enterprise funds that we do monthly journal entries, and those just have not been.
Okay, perfect. I I figured that's what it was, same.
Fully caught up, yeah.
Significant company loss and then investment earnings.
Um, those also get entered while we do bankrupt, yeah.
Yep.
But, um.
Why are we asking then?
Yeah.
Back to the, and then the state debt service reimbursement that will be. For expenditures, and this is just. For reminder, does H R fall under the state manager? That's kind of the few expenditures.
In Cordova, on the Cordova Center.
Um. Cordova Center is under.
So I knew there was more locked in there.
Um, the credit in bill or in. Planning is an error that would have come out as we do bankrupt, but I will highlight it to make sure.
Yeah.
Uh, without that, it would have a balance of three hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. For. Fire new S. Knowing that you have our agents to design. Sure, we'll find someone at some point for great, wonderful uh on-call hours. What that is that, is that how it's supposed to work? Or is that? How that gap is going to be filled by volunteers for those on-call hours?
For right now, the on-call or the the day shift other night, the air is driving. So that helps with the volunteers, because we have a driver and an EMT. So he, he'll be dragging during the weekdays, but yes, so right now volunteers are. Filling those shifts in. We are looking at a couple of things for some help. Um, I've contacted a company that. That's not give, right? We can, they have EMTs that they. Don't recommend them out, because we're gonna, we would hire them as a temporary position and then they would work for us. And so we're looking at that. They also have a list. Of people who are vetted and have worked with them, um, and are looking for short-term gigs, so it's so.
Kind of like traveling nurses.
Yeah, sort of. So we're working through that and we're trying to kind of get a schedule to understand when the best. What that would best look like. Do we want someone here every other two weeks? Do we want someone for three months? Or can we afford, um, we do have the ambulance fund, which is. Uh, revenue from when people ride in the ambulance. That we can help pay for that and we, we already have some wages. So we're, we're feeling that it's kind of complicated.
Are they working out notices or are they done?
Or what?
Are they working out notices or are they done?
And they gave notice and now they're done, they're the whole story.
Question do we have, would we provide housing for, would the city provide housing for these, um, on-call or?
That's some of the things that we're trying to figure out. Yes, the, the expect, expectation from the companies would be. Um, you would get them here. We've talked about trying to do a little work in the fire hall trading room. There's a bathroom and a shower and a kitchen and. Um, but we're also just kind of trying to check some things out to see if we can do. Um, but those are some of the logistics we're trying to look at.
Though outside of contracted services, that's gonna have its own expenses, but. We feel. Pretty confident with the. Wages that aren't going to be paid, at least that will be covering the initial. Stipend that they get for on overtime. I mean, that number is obviously going to go three.
Yeah, I can probably agree with on-call. We, Stephen and I talked about that.
Okay.
Um, so we feel like we'll be okay. And then we can attach wages.
Okay.
Something that on-call.
Thank you. But thank you, this is, this is very helpful, I know, there's been a lot going on, so. It was really nice to see besides. Well, that helps expedite that process slightly. We can be tracking where deficits are and we can see them and you guys may already be trying, but we're having a conversation around those.
Yeah, department heads do get. We shoot for monthly, admittedly, I had some stuff going on that did not make it monthly this whole year so far, but that's the goal. Um, so they get them regularly and are renewing those as well as. Yes, keeping up on there, but it's.
I was gonna ask the city manager if you know anything. I know we've seen mention of that legislation about, um. Renewing or reauthorizing funding for the secure rules, goals.
Really more about that.
Okay, cause I was thinking that that was for twenty-six and then it seemed like somebody was saying, oh, maybe that could be for this year, but.
Originally, they had said it would be twenty-five and twenty-six, but, um, and that was billed. And then I haven't heard anything since that first kind of impression from Steve. About that.
Thanks.
The other. Questions from council members about. This report.
Yeah, just what, what? What's our risk as we go into the budget season that will be here much sooner? I know we have. A million dollars that is. Not funded that we're planning on being funded.
Yeah.
What are we thinking? What's our plan? I mean, we're in a work session now and I think everyone's run to the numbers, so it's just.
Well, I think without really understanding what sales tax, you know, because right now, yeah, we know a million. But we don't know what our sales tax is getting, we don't know what our property tax is, and we don't know what our fish tax is, our three biggest revenue sources. So while we're, we're tracking, it appears with, and that's not true, we know what our property taxes are. But we're tracking it appears with, um. The sales tax. But it's a pretty big. Estimated revenue, so that'll be interesting to see. We have no idea where the fish tax is gonna be, there's a bad here. We went low for a reason, but. You know, it's, it's hard to know. So I think those are two things that we're, some things that we're thinking about and also. If any other changes come from the state.
Do we know how our local roughish tax came in or? And everybody paid that we know, because I know we've had late payers in the past. Um, is it in harbor though?
Yes.
And we also removed, you know, some money out of the. General funding, we had to take that note twenty.
But the proper tax number is three one two. But we'll look for no rate. It'll come in at like three five, right? That's what works.
Could I just go back for a second? What you were just saying about what, what is in the Harvard fund?
The point oh five percent fish tax.
And so local fish tax.
Okay, so that was another, that's what I was, yeah. So that is another source of. Okay.
And, yeah. Right now, it looks like it's half, it's on wage tonight, tomorrow it's a. And towards the bottom. Um.
But it went for.
But it was for last year.
Yeah.
So.
So we're not seeing a lot of pink.
And that one is more of a direct correlation to the year prior. I mean, it is a direct correlation, where the state one, they take a lot different things into that factor and, um. We don't see quite a hit after. Uh, for a year as, as this one gets, it is based on what they received last year, so. Yeah.
And then I know we increased slip fees, is, is that just an increase that we can anticipate because we have warm slip? I mean, it's a substantial increase, which is great, great to see. We have new harbors, it should be. Grease, so that's a positive thing and then, um, our fuel oil warfers that we moved into there.
Yeah, they have allowed payments to make this year.
Yes, they did.
So that'll be helpful and good for them.
I was just saying if the local roughish tax gave us a gauge on what our big roughish tax would be, but you said there's other things involved.
I still don't think it's gonna be a big, it's not gonna be big.
Yeah, it's not pretty good. Probably a blighter. So that's why we budgeted a little bit longer.
Sure.
But you're also saying this local one tracks the prior year.
Yes.
Which is the same as what we get from the state, it's the prior year.
Right, okay.
Um, and going back to property tax, I, I noticed somewhere in the patent that before, maybe it was in your report. Um, you have a number of calls from people asking about, um, senior discounts.
Did I say that in my report?
What's the issue there?
Well, we had a new code, we changed that part of code. So we went out and, and did applications for everyone again this year. Um, normally you don't have to apply every year. You are supposed to tell. Us if anything changes on your application, like say you put one in in two thousand twenty. If any of the factors on that application change. In twenty-two or twenty-three, you need to file again and, and tell us the changes and we can audit them at any time. But because the code changed and to get back to, you know. I don't know, start fresh, I guess, everybody applied again this year. But we did everything we could to advertise that they were out and we did not get some people, some people didn't apply. But we did not know if they did not apply because they forgot to apply. Or because their status changed and they weren't trying to get it this year because now they live somewhere else. Um, so we have heard from a few who are disgruntled. And we've been consistent and said, you can apply for next year. So we've heard from a few of those people, but, um. Collect, it is a time-consuming program to administer. And I understand that it is a lot of money for seniors and, and it's important to them, so it's been hard. But with being consistent and writing down our protocols and knowing that we do things the same way every year. And maybe finding other ways to get word out also. Sorry, that was long-winded.
And I think that, or equalization, everyone was very much. Understanding and accommodating that we saw any of those in there. There were a couple.
Sure, seniors take it anytime you.
We were in favor on that side.
Right, if you do not receive an exemption. And we tell you that, you also have the ability to appeal during the appeal process. The issue came with people who just never applied and how can we do anything if there is not an application in front of us? We can't go out and beg people to apply. Put it on the scanner, or. Put it on Facebook, put it on our website, you send letters to every single person who was on it. The list previous, so with an application. You get forwarded mail because you live elsewhere, I'm sorry.
And I think one thing that we heard, or at least one, one person, there were some impressions that the state reimburses us that money. And that is not true. If that comes out of our, it's not a reimbursal program.
It's. Regulated at a state level that we have provided this.
And then.
At our.
The statute has the disclaimer that says, you know, only funded at the legislature each year. Will there be reimbursement to the municipalities to administer this program? And that hasn't happened in years. And that person who was very upset felt a lot better about the fact that.
We weren't holding on to their.
Yeah, we weren't not giving it to her and then actually getting reimbursed, you know, we would have been reimbursed anyway. Sorry, yeah.
That's another thing to talk to Louis students about, make sure it's on. In the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, that's a bit of an unfunded mandate.
And that's what you're calling.
I think Casey maybe you're trying to get at, if we were coming up with some strategies to how to deal with a million dollars, maybe one. I think we. Um, we're mulling around some maybe out-of-the-box things, um, I'm not quite ready to put those out there yet, but. Um. You know, we hammered hard on revenue last year, so we are kind of against the wall right now. Um, I mean, I have some ideas, but they're not gonna save us a million dollars, so. Uh, we're gonna have to, you know. Figure out how we're gonna do that and. But I do have a few ideas.
And they are gonna be helpful in that process, right here.
And, and some of that been offset with vacant positions. And earlier in the year when we found out, I think about forest receipts and some of those. We're able to have a conversation about, well, we haven't filled these positions and so it might be a wash at, to this point.
We absorbed some of those to that point when we, um, made the budget amendment for the hundred and twenty thousand that went backwards the hard. We have seen some more, I mean. Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't really crunched those numbers yet to see what it's looking like. And it's hard to budget for next year based on. Unbuild.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, not for next year, just part of it is looking at how we're ending this year, when we get into our budgets process.
Big old empty harbor that has everybody out fishing is a very good thing.
Right, it is beautiful. Makes it a lot easier for me to park my clothes.
And everybody just in the town, right now, the music camp is. Going to local businesses and bringing groceries and renting cars.
Things are busy.
Just Hawaiian, uh, the camps, sorry, no.
Seventy runners coming to town.
This, and this is the hardest part of this budget, I think, is the art fiscal cycle is so. Unbalanced with when our money comes in. You know, it's just.
Yeah, it's just the weirdest thing.
I get that question all the time, property tax, and people are selling a house, they can't rest that, wait a minute, is that for this year or next year? Why is it all at the end of the year? Well, because we have a process we have to go through, the getting assessed values and equalizing and then. Setting a mill rate and that's why it's all at the end. But accounts for the twelve months, that we don't get it till end of August, end of October.
When I guess, curious on that, is that process alignment with other communities?
Yeah, I, I.
Has to be established in June when we set our mill rate? Just to me, it seems like it should just be in line with either a budget or with our.
You absolutely can set the mill rate any time of year, it just has to be done by June fifteenth. We have traditionally waited so that we match what we budgeted kind of thing, because assessed values change. Other communities, I see them do it. And then they just wind up with what they wind up with and they know it'll be. Up or down by a little, I guess, depending on what their assessed values come in at. I'm pretty sure Valdez does it early every year, because I, I think they're at twenty mils and they've been at twenty mils forever. They just choose that. Um, so I don't know that it's gonna help any. And as far as billing and stuff, I feel like Anchorage is a little bit ahead of us. They put out their bills just this season.
Well, the twenty mils, that means just adding some, that number can mean so many different things too.
Right, I mean.
All your total is this value.
Well, and then you have the marine terminal, I mean, that's what.
I've always had that in the back of my head, but I don't know that it would fly if we did some way of restructure and put. Everything at a really high mill also, so that we get the most out of. Businesses or the high-end, you know, multimillion-dollar things, but then give a benefit back to residential home. And as hard as the senior exemption is to administer, it would be time-consuming, but it's not. Un-hurts, you know. Do a residential property tax exemption, residential owner's exemption.
And is that what Valdez does or something similar?
They have that, a lot of communities have that.
They have it set to a certain.
I think there's a max of seventy-five thousand. I'm not sure. But you'd have to calculate if that becomes a benefit to a person or not, if you raise.
We're here to be creative, whatever that looks like and however we can do that, so.
I think we've talked about too, it's like summer housing or. I, I, I know people have said, you know, they do that in Anchorage or they do that other places where people second residents. But it's, I don't know if.
Oh, meaning that, yeah, if you own a few properties, two or three of them are rentals, one is your home. You're gonna pay a lot more in taxes on the ones that are rentals, because you're, it's a business. So you are owner business and you're making money on this.
Do we have any way to track like residential domicile or whatever in town that is someone's vacation? Whether they just live, I mean, they just choose to come up here for two months out of the year or out of where, but this is not their primary residence. I know that is pretty incredible in town.
Well, maybe putting in a homeowner's exemption would let us.
Sure.
Regulate that, or.
Sure.
That ability. If everybody's honest. Yeah.
Well, there, with that, could be some checks and balance also.
There are, it's difficult.
And worth exploring, I mean, obviously, it sounds like we're not, we're just exploring this, other communities do it. Those issues are gonna, we're not gonna be unique in those issues of how to enforce this. Those issues are gonna, we're not gonna be unique in those issues of how to enforce this.
My head hurts thinking about the math, but it's doable to calculate some numbers.
That's a. Sign, I would imagine, I mean, just the people I know in this community, I don't even know that many people who choose to come up here for. Again, not their residency, they choose to come up here for, they're not necessarily even rentals, they're not necessarily renting their. Over domicile out, they just choose to come up here out of whim or when they want or certain times of year or whatever. And that's a home that's most of the year sitting vacant, that's no one else is used, which if that's their. To me, that's their choice, but if that's what you choose to do, then. Here is a, here is a burden to be held by everyone else.
But then it could backfire because like rentals instead. Are people just gonna raise their rent if their taxes on their home that they're renting to someone? You know, and that'd be hard for people to afford rentals anymore. But you have to have placeful to be making any money out it, so maybe you can't. Maybe people would divest of those homes more quickly and then people could be homeowners. And they'd all be getting the break and we'd lose money.
Yes, question's got me thinking, um, do we have a lot of, and I I see this with some of the gillners that. Live on their boats for the course of the summer in the harbor. Do we track that or not, because?
But there are more than.
There are.
We don't crap what you said, no.
No, but I just. Yeah. Come here, use our infrastructure and don't contribute to it.
Um, they would say that they perceive amount in space round and.
Well, so do.
Oh, I I have pushback on that, or slip fees, geez, we have some.
I agree.
Inexpensive slip.
And houseboats, we've talked about houseboats for years, there's probably not too many, a handful, right?
Uh, something to consider in the future, just like.
You know, so we could, well, they charge them the fee. We're staying in the harbor. Or that would go to the gym, I mean, what what's your thought on?
I don't know, you're.
Okay, if you're.
Their harbor fee doesn't help in all the other infrastructure that they use.
And that, you know, if you're living on your boat, then your slip is higher. It's a thought, I don't know, I just to explore some ideas of the people who come here for the summer and. Um, we still have three other seasons of infrastructure that we have to pay.
Because we have talked in the past about a real.
A personal property on boats, right, on boats and. I don't think we can delineate between if you live on it or if you don't.
I was just thinking that that was another way of reaching that particular segment of people who come to town.
But then against everyone.
Right, and so then you figure out, you know, if we are collecting more because we're imposing a personal property tax, do we lower the. Real property tax rate a little bit to compensate the folks who live here and to balance it a little bit.
That's a lot of math to figure out.
No, no, I don't mean like exactly.
Hey, can I weigh in here?
Yes, Councilmember Nicholson.
Yeah, I mean, you know. I think there's just a real fine balance because. I'm hearing from the long line plate that people are kind of steering away from our community because we are. Putting more, more burden on them that's pushing in other places and and you know, when our. Revenue was derived from fish tax, it's like, I I think we really need to carefully consider. What what we're charged, because we're trying to get people to come here and obviously they're using facilities and. Services that that require year round money, but it it's sort of a catch twenty two if we start. If we start making it more unfriendly and and more cost effective to go to Yakta, they're gonna go to Yakta or they're gonna go to Tewar or wherever else. So I think it's, I think it's, I think we almost need to form a working group. Um, this fall and really kind of take a close look at it and sort of run some numbers about. You know, our projections when we're looking at this stuff and it's nice to hear the conversation based on, you know, summer quarter opens that. Aren't involved in the fishery, but I think that's a real.
Thanks, yeah.
We're losing our moniker of the friendly city. It's a long time ago. We're still friendly?
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely gonna take some.
There's something, something worth talking about, I like Mike's. Um, suggestion of having a working group. Sit down and see what may or may not be possible.
And I think Alaska Municipal League is a is a big resource too, just for looking at what other communities do, how other places, we don't have to. Reinvent anything, other communities probably wrestle with this also.
Questions? Comments?
Thanks a lot for putting this together, Cheryl.
Yeah, thank you, it's very nice.
Happy that you're like you're acting, you could do this and. Getting.
Friend and realize it's never gonna be perfect.
No.
I don't wanna give you perfect information, but yeah, um, in lieu of everything being reconciled and caught up, this is what we have for right now. And that is helpful.
Yeah, no.
Do folks wanna take a break before the.
Adern it, the work session.
Is that okay? Any more, any more good questions? Mike, are you, do you have any further questions?
Uh, no, not not yet, thanks.
All right, let's adjourn the meeting and take a break before the.
So Lily is our new police officer. And then Erin is our new mayor marshal. But, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily comes from Maryland, she actually comes from my old academy, so don't hold that against her. She's been doing.
Yeah, I'll have you all. Right, so. All meetings are ordered, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'll let the clerk call the roll.
Mayor Smith here, Deborah Adams here, Aaron Hanson is absent, Casey Gensman.
Here.
Mike Nicholson.
Here.
Wendy Rainey here, Kathy Sherman here, there's Ashrow is absent, that's the former council.
Thank you. So we have the regular agenda before us, are there any? objections? No objection, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Agenda's approved, um disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communication, does anyone have any disclosures to make? Communications by and petitions from visitors, we don't have any scheduled guest speakers. Um, we can take audience comments on agenda items at this point, does anyone have any? Uh, comments to make on agenda items tonight? So staff. Okay, chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions. To speak that capacity, seeing what government forward. Uh, approval of consent calendar.
I think I had a question about number eight.
I was gonna ask for me to lead, yes.
Okay, yeah. So with the rest of the consent calendar, we'll move uh eight, maybe to um new business before having agenda. We were like eighteen A. So on the rest of the consent calendar, Wendy Rainey, yes, Mike Nicholson.
Yeah.
Aaron Hanson is absent, Casey Gensman.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Deborah Adams.
Yes.
And Asher was absent, the consent hour is approved.
Thank you, great, we've had minutes, we just took care of that, we don't have any bits or proposals to consider. Excuse me, and that brings us to reports of officers. Um, I put a written report in the packet and and have these answer questions, I did wanna just comment on. The, um, we also saw their, the report from the Chamber of Commerce, which I think is terrific and I'm so pleased to see that. They're able to report on meetings and events that they've been able to recruit and one of them coming up. The week after next is the Resources Defend Development Council. Uh, so they're coming, they come on Sunday, the twenty seventh, and they're here until the twenty ninth. And there's a community reception Monday evening on the twenty eighth. And I'm gonna be out of town that, uh, for a few days that week, but um. If people can go to that, we, I I did talk a little bit about, so I think some topics that I think would be. Uh, worth mentioning to those folks when. They're here, but I I hadn't realized until I read the chamber report that they're coming here was a direct result of them being. Uh, of the chamber having marketed this facility in this town to them for that, so that's, I think, really positive. Um, and I did just wanna call out, I, uh, to give a, uh. Shout out to the water operators who got their certification, that's really great and it's just great to be, um. Continuing to cultivate professional development to move our staff up and get them more training, so. Thanks to those folks who um got the certification. Yeah, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So like we've talked about a few things, there's one for pending agenda, I need letters that we would like you.
Think there's one that I forgot to do that. Um, yeah, but it was secure road schools or we, it's not a central air service, because.
It could always be secure, I don't know, we have questions on it, go ahead and. But you know.
Oh, I think, wait, I was supposed to write to baggage. Sorry. Yeah, is there something else that?
No, I just, I, and I think maybe this is a follow up on secure rules. That's something new, we have a pending agenda, but I don't think.
Right. So then we come to the city management's report.
Um, I was going to add that the E I clear funding disappeared. And so it's a new board, it's a huge step for those guys, um, for all of us. Especially if you're covering waters and that's pre-stress all time, so that's pretty exciting, um. I'm just. Super busy, I've been looking at the jobs, so we did have an interview with the finance director, we'll be chatting with him again. And still waiting on the cheaper fees. Um, okay, wait, I love the answer. And if you have any questions, I'll pull over, stay in a cannon, send you.
Thank you, that was great. Uh, Matt Mayor, by the way.
Yes.
Um, just out of curiosity for the finance director, I'm just saying, oh. Think move to town or not move to town, or what's, which state are they winning, do we know, is that disclosed?
Uh, hybrid.
And a restructure of all that, just curious if that is helping us to get some candidates, if you'd enough.
Thanks a lot for the written report, that was.
Yes. I'm just planning how much work you actually do, so.
Wish I could, hours.
Can't it just be more things for you to do?
Thirty eight hours. Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. And it's great to see progress on those positions, that's. Make everybody's life easier. Other questions from council members, building managers? So also there are staff reports in the packet. Folks have any? Other city guests?
Over city for your board.
Oh, I'm sorry, the clerk, yeah, sorry, city clerk.
Well, look, Sam Hope, a red one in South front. But if you see a bottom, I'm leaving town for a little bit. And so if you're writing any letters or sending any questions or whatever, if anyone can. CC Colette, and she can answer anything, so Kristen, if you're writing any letters, she can book on that, whatever for you.
Great.
And otherwise, I threw in a little reminder about all the land sale items that are always before you, and how they're quasi judicial, I'm just a good reminder, because I think a lot of people have been. Either on planning mission or other boards and commissions who are also weighing in on those items, they're hearing from the people sometimes, and. So, so Amanda about that, tell me about making sure that their boards also realize. That they should not be speaking to people that's considered ex parte, and better to everybody here at once, together on the board or commission or on council. And weigh in on the exact same information.
And that's it, for me, answer any questions? Thank you. Okay, excuse me, no, I don't see any questions from the clerk, and so now we come to staff reports and ask questions, right, yeah. I have questions for Kenneth, for public works. Move on to the hot seat.
So I flew over the dump. At five hundred feet, and there were twenty five bears on the open cell.
That was a small amount compared to up to the thirty plus that we can see sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm concerned about the safety issues, cuz bear spray, when the bears are pulling the bags out of the truck, is not gonna do much. So. Are, is there thoughts about maybe letting them carry a weapon, other than bear spray, especially now since we don't have the truck that. Since we're basically only using the vehicles that require them to get out. And deal with the bears.
The training and liability that would come along with that, I mean, we haven't even explored what the costs are, and they would have the extensive training programs and certifications to allow staff to carry weapons, and I. I don't know if our insurance would even allow that to happen with those, you know, if it's outside law enforcement. So I don't know, where it's not something that we're exploring currently. One thing, and while this doesn't keep the bears out of the landfill. Completely, DEC is becoming. Going a little more heavy handed and starting to push us towards a requirement of putting a fence up around the.
The.
The ready cell.
Yeah.
And so that maybe hopefully over time would deter the bears from coming around at least as many, once they realize they over time can't get to the source. However.
Have to do that by next year, right, like we have to start construction on the fence by June first.
That is what the, that's the anticipated language that we're expecting to see in the permit that we haven't received yet, but that's what they've indicated. And so, yeah, I mean, when it comes to budget time, that's gonna be a big discussion, along with the need for a dumpster truck and.
Yeah.
So on and so on.
There, there's some grant opportunities that you may wanna start discussing now, like the I C B B G, which is the imminent threat. Funding is for tribal, and if you wanna talk to native village, because it's a dump for everyone, and it does impact the village as well. That's a possibility. The interagency Grisley Committee has funding for, grant funding for fences around open cells. The rural development solid waste management, there's open cell fencing grants.
What was the last one?
I can, I'll just send you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll explore every opportunity we can off, yeah.
Yeah, especially that the imminent threat of the tribal type, that focuses on fences for rural dumps. So that might be, and you know, you don't wanna, the conversations need to start now, cuz it's applications and. Things, especially if we're gonna, to be permitted, we're gonna have to have that started construction by June, I mean, I guess you could put some. Post holes in the ground and say that construction started to get started permitting, but yeah.
Permit that we're getting lasts for a few years, and so it would be. Yeah.
Five years, yeah.
So, you know, it would need to be done before the next permit cycle, I don't know what sort of enforcement that there would be. To try and to have us have it done before the next permit cycle, but I mean, at a minimum, they will be requiring it. By at least, you know, we need to start it next year, and everybody expects it to be done before they give us any permit.
I'm just more concerned about safety at this point, I mean, that's just crazy.
I think that's also a concern when the fence comes up, yeah.
Plus keeping people out, I mean, as we flew over it, it was closed, and there were four vehicles at the gate.
Yeah.
Those people are gonna walk in to see the bears, you know, yeah.
I've given, you know, the landfill staff explicit instructions that anybody that enters that property, the police are called, and they're trespassing charged, so. That needs to be spread around the community, I don't care if you're a teenager, or if you're an adult, it doesn't matter who you are, if you enter that landfill. We will call the police, you will be charged. It is not somewhere that the public needs to be, or should be, or is allowed to be.
So I could go on with that public service email.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be a great notice to get out, to get the word out to people, I mean, people take friends and relatives out there to.
Yeah, we see it on the Facebook bear page, where do I look for bears, stay in the dump.
Yeah, I would post.
Just what you want is bring your family to the last bit, show them the bears in the dump, so great picture.
Yeah, it's just, it's just scary, I did earlier in the season, we were prepared, the previous bad bear time, I asked Aaron. Just to make an appointment to do a tour of the landfill, because. You know, there's so much more that goes on out there that we don't know about, and he showed me the open cells, he showed me that the bears are actually digging into closed cells, so it's not just the open pit. And how they have to do the water sampling, I mean, I suggest that everybody take a trip out there, make an appointment with him, so that you understand what all's involved, it's not just dumping bags of garbage, it's. It's a big deal, and it's a very dangerous place right now.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, because we get the same sort of things from the public where they wonder, you know, why, why does it cost so much for my garbage? We take it, you know, you're just picking it up and dragging it away, it's like there's a lot that goes on besides the picking up portion, so I appreciate that, and. Yeah, I mean, while, you know, we're expecting it to be a mandate, it's something that we're investigating on how we'll be doing the funding for that, and I would love to see. The list that you've got, and I'll definitely run those down.
I think, real quick, I just had a question on the Cordova Center staircase project contract approved and signed. Was on, was in their facilities?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's the one that was discussed at the work session.
Okay, that's the runners, okay. Okay, that's, that was it, I just, I was just shocked by the bear thing.
Yeah, it's impressive, impressive in a sad and scary way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for public works? Thank you.
Mayor Smith? Yes, I just have one little comment on Parks and Rec. And I, I must have, don't come up, it's. I think, I didn't, I didn't get an initial request for donating to stairs, kind of, I have to be fair of that. But I also wanted to say that if you are discussing grants and things with Rasmus and, they're gonna, first thing they're gonna ask you, well, has your governing body donated? Looking around the table. So that is the first thing Rasmus and Alaska.
The first.
That's my experience.
I'm good with that, that is.
Yeah.
I had a comment firsthand, that summer programming guide is awesome, thanks for bringing that out, we pass that along to our guests, cuz we have a lot of folks that are. You know, in town for longer, and wanna take advantage of programs that are open. And it's just nice to have it at the coffee shop too, cuz we get a lot of the kiddos out there, so I appreciate that, it's well done, thank you.
Yeah, I was just noticing in general in the Parks and Rec report that there's a lot of the metrics that you're tracking where the numbers are up, and it's great, thanks for all the work is going to make that happen.
Oh, so the, how about our fire partners and all that they do, great, great. Great stats in there, there's great stats that are presented here, some of them are actually not that great of stats that we have done, and that we have. A volunteer force that is willing to do these things that. It's not a desirable thing to do, and we can't have a community, a variety of community that have it us, so. Thank you for the report, thanks for, kind of, I guess we'd say some sobering stats, but some things you probably read them, thank you for that. And I always think it's fun to look at museum library, and how many people come in, and from where, all over the place, that's. Those stats as well.
And if you come at Sam and David Rose and Paul Show, oh my goodness. It was packed in the opening, but it is stupendous.
And it's up for the rest of the world?
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, definitely worth going to see.
So, thank you, Chef, for the report, it works.
And we do read them.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments from online? Mike? Okay. So we can. Go on then to correspondence. Starts on page fifty five, and. Do folks have any comments or questions about anything that got included in correspondence? I would ask if, I'm thinking I could send in a letter commenting on the winter fair schedule. And do folks have anything in particular you wanted to raise in it, I mean, I would ask for. More of an explanation about the expanded layup. Time, I mean, I know part of it was because of the, they found a lot of rust in the finer main on the Aurora, and that's gonna take more time to do repairs, but. I was told an extra thirty days, and this is. Seems like it's.
Oh.
More than that?
Yeah, nine, almost, yeah, eleven weeks, so, yeah.
So it's normally then mid October, mid December.
Mid December, right, right.
Now it's first of October till.
Mid January, right.
So, oh, forty five extra days.
Yeah.
And then you have to add another twenty percent onto that, because boatwork always takes longer, then you say it's going to.
Right.
So hopefully that has the fifteen days then?
Yeah. But you need to update the community events too, like the ice storm festivals in February, not January, and. We do have out of town folks coming in for the Christmas bazaar, and that's not listed on there, so, I mean, they bring in, they have to come in. On a ferry, usually, if they're bringing, like, the chainsaw dude and all that kinda stuff, and that's not listed on there, so. And for high school basketball, I don't know, so that's kind of close for the football.
Football, yeah.
What's the date for that? Well, mid-January usually.
About the second week in January. I, I just have a comment on. This made me dizzy, I don't know how, I mean, I could spend a few hours trying to parse it out, but this is not for late people.
But it's been that way so long that I think people have gotten used to it.
Okay, well, this is the first time I've ever seen anything like this, and I just thought, this is not fair to the late person, can you just make it simple?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not coming, that's. Is the one I was looking.
That's the sort of failing calendar, yeah.
The one to.
Yes.
Can I just say about B there, thirteen B? We didn't write to him about.
I was gonna ask you.
We wrote about E A S. Do you remember how baggage replied to us about E A S? Cuz his staff thought it right. These guys thought we wrote about. The Asian safety, and then wrote us a three page letter about it, but that is what we wrote.
So can we send it then?
Kinda be fun though.
It's all been different response.
Kinda be fun, correct, um, yeah. Generally, we can do that at an election.
And I haven't spent a lot of time looking at this Copper River Highway Route Alternative Study, that's another piece of correspondence that I think they're saying.
It has the link to the, it's a paper for.
Right, right.
Quiet for.
And, yeah.
Looked a little burdened detail yet either, maybe Kevin has.
When, they say there's, it doesn't, I don't see a date for a comment deadline, but maybe that's.
Madam Mayor, probably speak.
Sorry, I was just looking for a comment deadline on this Copper River Highway Transportation Planning Document, but yes, maybe that's online too.
I think it's just the final report, I don't know that it is looking for comment.
Yeah, doesn't sound like it.
And it says things like, fix the bridge. I'm like, oh, great idea.
Right. I wait for the bridge. Okay, well, that's correspondence then, so that, if there's no other comments on that. We can move on to ordinances and resolutions. That brings us to ordinance vol two three two. I want to entertain a motion.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Make a motion to bring ordinance vol thirty two, accepting speed goals on ridges of six point twelve point zero three zero to the table for discussion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Sherman?
Oh, I just have one quick question, so, and I, I think I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure this is clear, so this doesn't include. Requiring sponsors to have a permit from alcohol rail and control for it, correct? They still have to get a permit.
Yes, right, they still have to do that.
I just wanted to make sure, and that would be the same case for the Port of the Center as well then too, since those are the two exceptions.
Do they still do that, and?
They should, they do.
Well, then I know. They do, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had on that, and I think it's a, a good housekeeping. Thing to do, release, I can submit to the. All your approvals in before an event.
And it's run by volunteers, that's the order, yeah, already doing enough.
Councilmember Rainey? Or, yeah, you were saying.
Yeah, no, that was. My late question, thank you Kathy, for counsel to the chairman.
Thank you. Other one of these questions? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Alright, so ordinance one, two, three, three. Entertain motion. You think it's that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move ordinance twelve thirty. Oh. Three. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one, that's next one, okay, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, limiting cordova's. Municipal code section four point one, six point zero five zero, residency requirement to replace city limits with greater Cordova area. And to clarify and further define residency. The table for discussions, second.
It's been moved and seconded, councilmember Sherman.
Um, I just think. This deserves to be recognized, that it shows, first of all, that our community is expanding. Growth, which I think is a good thing. It also acknowledges the need to have some adaptive work schedules and flexibility, which I think we're finding out. The recent hires we're trying to make, um, and I thought it was really well researched with other communities and presented well by staff, so. I'm in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you, councilmember Adams.
I would concur, and just that we, um, try to encourage people to work here and, um, be flexible at the same time. Um, the work world is changing. Um, the school district had a real financial person as well. And it's the only way that we could get the job done, so I think this is, um, gonna satisfy two things.
Thank you, any other comments or questions about this? Ordinance, councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, I'm guessing it's brought to this point because there. You know, uh, CBA. Signings of collective bargaining agreement and issues with.
We will have to do a lot of.
Okay.
But we need to know that we can do it.
Perfect, okay.
It's kind of like hard for the horse if we, so this is the first step to move it forward.
I know, I, um, spoke with our law enforcement and they're. Decided to make some traction on this, which is, make them happy then.
Yeah, they're working very hard and.
They're working very hard.
It is very apparent that, you know, it was double across the state and we can't communicate that.
This provides them a reprieve and gets them their weekends, whatever days their weekends might be with their families. And, uh, so they're in a schedule. I can support them.
Any other council members wanting to comment, councilmember Ranny or councilmember Mickelson?
No.
Alright.
Just, just to clarify, this is the one about, about residency, right? Uh, I, I haven't missed anything, have I?
I'm sorry, the one about, uh, resident, resident, so. Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm in support of this, you know, I think there's some qualified people that would like to run the city council that. Live just outside, excuse me, live just outside of city limits and, and. Being a person that has always lived in the Port of the Area but not always in city limits, I, I think there's some, some qualified people that would be good to get into, uh. Some of these volunteer positions, so, thank you.
Doesn't work for that, unfortunately, this is just about employees.
Okay, alright, sorry.
There's another big word that starts with an A that would. I may have that, so.
Okay, well, hearing or seeing no, um, further discussion. All those in favor of ordinance one, two, three, three, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Right. Resolution zero seven two five, zero seven dash two five dash one eight.
Um, Mayor, I move to approve resolution zero seven two five one eight.
I'll second, second, thank you, um, councilmember Kinsman?
Necessarily, I want more discussion, I don't know that I have anything necessarily specific. Outlined. Very good, thank you, it's always nice when that comes forward in resolution. Nice to see stats, um. I mean, they want to see it move forward as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, councilmember Sherman?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, is this an increase in rent? Sorry, Adam. Yes, there's been no increase since twenty sixteen due to the CPI language, so we've changed that to be in line with the rest of our leases and. That's, I think the only change that's happened is increasing to the current value for today and, um, changing that CPI to. Uh, language should be in line with the rest of our leases, so.
Yeah, that's great, thanks.
That's great, my comment, see CPI, let me put it in there.
Yeah, thank you very much for. That consistency.
I, I'm sorry, I, I apologize, councilmember Ranny, you were the second on the motion.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um. Well, I think that it's a dire situation to get our public safety folks out of that building. Um, due to the danger of mold and other things, um. I'm glad to see that we're gonna get some rent out of the other side of that, but I think our focus needs to be. Finding, uh, another spot and getting rid of the building that should have been gotten rid of a long time ago. And we've got folks working daily in dangerous situations. I suggest everybody take a look at the Petri dishes in the top drawer of the administrator's office there. Um, I just think we need to focus on getting them out of that building, but I'm glad to see we're gonna charge for the other half while we're having that discussion.
Mike, what about our tsunami warning, and our emergency services have to evacuate our emergency service building? Something's wrong there.
Yeah.
And it's rather time of today.
Actually, yeah. So I'm in very way, uh.
Okay, any further comments on this resolution? Authorizing the conveyance of twenty-five hundred usable square feet of office space to the state of Alaska. Okay, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign? That, that's also. So the next item is resolution zero dash two five dash one nine. Resolution of the Council of the City of Port of Alaska authorizing the conveyance by lease of lots three and four block eight. Original town site to record on the Chamber of Commerce.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve resolution zero seven dash two five dash one nine.
Second, second, great, councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, I. I, I guess I'll say, I appreciate going into this, the, uh, recognition. Of what the Chamber has done, as timely as we got the quarterly report from the Chamber. That's all positive things to see, grateful to see on the city's side, the opportunity for us to assess. Those in mind donations and those aren't written into, uh, the lease agreement. Very prudent, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Sherman?
Yes, I, um, I agree with everything councilor Kinsman said, um. I think it shows that our support is limited, but our support is there, um, and. I also was happy to see there's no subletting in the building, um. Yeah, so, um, really pleased, it was great to have all the background and, uh, good information, so thanks to staff.
Thank you, other council comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution zero seven dash two five dash one nine, please signify by saying aye.
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 Can you oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Thank you, question passes one. Resolution zero seven dash two five dash two zero. Resolution of the city, of, of the Council of the City of Port of Alaska authorizing the city manager to enter into a sole source contract in commons. To repair the twenty nineteen Wiki dumpster truck. So moved.
That's it.
Great, uh, councilmember Ranny?
Um, yeah, please.
Councilmember Kinsman?
No, we're wasting too much time, this topic lasts.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
Any else, just that was asked, okay, alright, all those in favor of. The, uh, resolution zero seven dash two five dash two zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes, thank you. Okay, this brings us to.
Eight A.
Eight A, right, so, um, the council action to waive protests of the renewal of liquor license. Number seven four seven, lawyer order of the moose.
I just had a quick question about the application, everything on there is signed by Steve. And, um, have they done a new application with the new president's signature?
Well, it was dated before.
Before pass.
How that's the process takes so long, so that was my question too, Liz, and I, I. I, I think if I, whatever's reading on my ticket, it would go ahead and pass, but then they will have to update their records like immediately.
That was my own concern, I have no, I have nothing against, you know.
No, me too. No.
It continuing forward, I just noticed that and was concerned that that may.
I didn't want to get in trouble.
Yeah.
I, I paused one meeting, I waited on it because I contacted ABC and I said, and I said. Take your best, but it's been so long since he applied, you know, what, so they said they were in touch with the moose. So I waited until the next meeting and they still haven't heard anything, but I knew it was fine for us to do this part and they will remedy it before.
Okay, that was my only problem, yeah.
Yeah, right, sure, thanks.
So would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah.
Or basically just wait for it. I'm sorry, make a motion to be waived.
Uh, so moved.
So second?
So do I think of them.
Okay.
Or.
And the third, yeah.
Lots of support.
Um.
Which I would just like to give my.
Yes.
This comment that the moose does incredible things for the school and I find. This is sadly generated, yeah.
Um, okay, so it was moved by Ranny, seconded by Adams.
I just wanna support that, right, or we can.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Please. Okay, so we come to new and misleading business planning agenda. What have we got?
We need to, well, I have that, if you're gonna write a couple of letters, you might, if you're doing them soon, you know, just send them to me and I'll let. All I can think of.
I think under, I'm looking at page one thirty-one in the packet and then item B two. And that come off since. The council voted to issue an RFP.
Oh, we did, mm-hmm, let's do that, okay.
Brought something.
Is there any update on three, like, is there a sale happening on that, do we have it urgently?
I have not. Not, that's why I put it there though, to be thinking about it, but yeah, you know, I'm pretty sure that the owners are fishing right now, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have. Number two is to the attorneys and they are slammed right now. So it was very nice that we were able to get those other two written kind of by ourselves, they helped a little with twelve thirty-three, but those other two, you know, they were. Smaller, easier ones that we are confident that we did accurate, but. This one, I, I, is too tricky because it can be in a few places kind of thing. With the council having a role in the CBA approval, and we also can wait because we don't have to do anything until the end of twenty-six.
Yeah, we don't negotiate.
So.
Twice it's.
It, you know, it ends. It has to be done by then, it will start April of next year.
Okay, so we don't have a ton of time, but we have. A little. And Sam won't be gone, so she promised us to involve you.
Can you tell me what CBA stands for? Sorry.
The, um.
Left-in bar game.
Okay, so we have, um, meetings scheduled. For August sixth and.
That is the next one, there are three weeks between, it's a very convenient time for me to be escaping. And not overburdening anybody else. Trying not to bring my computer, but we'll see if I leave here with it today or not.
As a reason for missing, not running out, but Salmon Jam is coming up this weekend, so.
I wrote it.
A big, yeah, yeah, just.
I put all.
Giving a shout out for the, for the listeners at home, absolutely, this probably everybody knows.
Yeah. Shout out for all the pickleball tournaments. February school's starting already, I'm so sorry February that I wrote that on there. We just have one vacancy left on boards and commissions, it's the historic. Bull Society.
Start reservation, eventually there's a sort of reservation.
So it has to be a member of the Historic Society?
Correct. No, you do not.
You, me and Nancy Burke have done our shift. But I was thinking too, that historic preservation commission keeps us. Able to be a certified local government and there are hard rents out there.
On their money.
There was an email recently that they were supposed to weigh in on, I think they're.
Okay, there might not be.
Doing it, I know, it's under this administration, but I was thinking about Smiters Cabin or something, it's like historic though.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So. But. They need a leader. Yeah.
Brainstorm, keep brainstorming.
Anything else that needs to be added to any agenda? Something here, we're paying.
Yeah, it's fine, whatever you want.
Alright, happy to. Stick with what we've got, because it's, it's a playing ball play. About that. Okay. Well then, let's move on to audience participation. Does anyone in the audience wanna make a comment? Anything related to city business? Not just agenda items? No stampede, um, council comments? Why don't we?
Oh, sure, oh, yeah, he did say he's leaving at eight.
Uh, councilmember Mickelson, you wanna lead all the council comments?
Sure, I, I'd like.
Oh, I think maybe we lost two.
Always as frequent as I would like to, and, um. Yeah, I, I, I think. I think we're gonna have a busy calendar here once fishing is over, I, I've certainly, uh. Got some catching up to do, to, uh, get current with you guys, but thanks for, ready for their time.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna. Hank Mike for calling in, I know that's hard to do, but, um, no, thanks for all those great staff reports. Um, all the rest of, all the work that went into this packet. Is why we're getting on for before day of college tonight, so we really appreciate that, and all of you. And Sam, so thank you for putting together great packets for us.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Uh, thank you to staff and I. Especially the staff, those in our attendance, uh. Work session, Cheryl and Sam, that was very good information, you know, they're, wasn't the only one, but one of our performance to have. Eight. Even if it's a semi-annual quarterly, I understand why not, but semi-annual just gives us a, a perspective. So we're not seeing this for the first time in October, it is really, really helpful and I think that allows us. So we're not seeing this for the first time in October. It is really, really helpful and I think that allows us. To better utilize our time when it comes to October and then. Yeah, so thank you, thank you very much, um. And, and then I would say, echo some of what councilmember Sherman said, with fantastic packets. That does expedite the process a lot, so thank you, um, and then. Good morning, thanks. One, thank you for our urgency from public service. Again. Keep this community safe and running and. Do an outstanding job. I mean, really, we consider the services that we have. One T five to five thousand people, we can look at different times of the year. We have some pretty amazing services. I mean, I've lived in some small communities that were on a county and were remote and all of their stuff was based at the county's mercy. They figured, figured in Cordova, they had lost resources. And so then goes a long way in our conversation and as the public and your input, because it's going to cost money. It's going to cost money for them to have the infrastructure they need to continue to do the job that they do. Um, if we want to say how good of a job they do, just think of how much better of a job they could do with better infrastructure. Uh, the other thing, we had a great turnout last week. We had quite the controversial item on, on the agenda. And I guess we had something quite less controversial, uh, today, because it is pretty quiet out there. Um, we sure enjoy seeing our community involved in it. So you're out there, come join us, come see what's going on, um, we. This came at the end, we were talking about Phil Lot. The Phil Lot, this Phil Lot, this Phil Lot, this Phil Lot, so controversial. How about the executive session and what we voted to go into executive session last week to stand up a committee? For potentially the transfer of our hospital to. And it's been, been talked about for years and years and years, years and years and years, and we're finally saying we're at a point. Where we're standing up a committee to start negotiations with N D E and there wasn't a single comment. Not one single comment. If you want to talk about what affects our community, that affects our community far more than a Phil Lot. So you're out there in the public, but to focus on some priorities or. Or come tell us your priorities, even that, really, the Phil Lot over our, our medical system, our entire medical system, big things. So. So I.
Councilmember Rennie?
Well. I supposed to follow that? I was just gonna say, everybody needs to give blood, so the state is low and desperate, so. There is a opportunity through the hospital to sign up as a, um, blood donor right now and to get on that list, um, there. The state is desperately low for O positive or negative. Um, if you could just please, uh, think about getting on the list for the walking blood donors in Cordova, I think it'd be a good idea to.
I think there is also a sign up for the state. By July twenty-second and we'll push that back out through the gov delivery emails. Because the, right. I'm saying right cross, but whoever's doing the blood collecting needs a certain amount of numbers.
Right.
Which is different than the walking.
Right, it's different than that. I went through Anchorage on a flight and had a layover. And the Anchorage Airport and took an Uber over to the blood draw place and was in and out of there within an hour and was able to give blood for. Being O negative, so I mean, I, I think we just need to, to do our due diligence there. Thanks to staff, I. Enjoy those quarterly reports. I do read them and I didn't mean to single you out, Kevin, I was just kind of still in awe of the, uh, bear activity out there. Um, everybody's reports are great. I appreciate the promotion list in the fire department. Congratulations to those three promoted candidates. That's exciting to see. Um, and welcome to the new fire chief and, or fire, uh. Marshall, Marshall, sorry.
And new fire chief, I mean, they're both fitting.
They're both sitting next to one another, but I'm really tired, sorry. Um, and, uh, I appreciate the, the, the police department. We've interacted with them. Unfortunately, pretty right, you're really out of my place and I appreciate them being professional and, uh. And doing their due diligence with us, um, out there, so. Thank you to the staff that we have. They're pretty amazing. Hopefully we get to, to add to that crew.
Councilmember Adams?
Well, just to repeat, thank you to staff for all the hard work and Cheryl especially, um, putting. The numbers together and, um, please, it doesn't have to be perfect. And, um, I'm relieved to hear that the driver walked away from that accident unscathed, um, more or less. And, um, yesterday when I heard the sirens going off for quite a long time, the ambulance and. I don't, I, I can hear it from my house and I always. Get my, gets the hairs on the back of my neck and I also wonder who it is and I'm so glad that we have people who can respond. Um, to accidents and when we need help and so thank you for that. Um, and then just. On a side note, um, I traveled out of country and, you know, you meet people from all different places. Where are you from? I'm from, and I'm from Alaska. Oh, and if you get like, I'm come from another planet, but, um. And they say, where do you live? And then I have to do the little map of Alaska and then I show them pictures of Cordova and everybody's blown away. And I'm very proud to share, um, the fact that we live in this, this beautiful place, so it's good to have come home as well, so.
Um, I just wanted to tap on a couple of comments based on things that we, that, um. We've talked about recently. One is the, um, I know people have said this, but I thought I would say so that people who are listening have also heard that the tsunami preparedness. Session, um, that was held last night, um, is on the city's YouTube channel, so people can go watch that. And there is a way to sign up for text alerts for tsunami warnings, um, which I have not found the actual link yet for, but I know it's out there, so. That's something that people could also do to help be prepared. Um, I did want to thank the staff for all the reports and Cheryl, the councilmember Kinsman talked about the finance report. I think it just helps all of us become more familiar with. Um, all the different councils and the revenues expenditure, so that's super hopeful and. I just wanted to say, uh, I saw in the Public Works. Report that people are messing with the locking pins on the dumpsters and the city has gone to great lengths to get those pins and to get those precautions in place, so please. Use them for what they're, for what they're intended for instead of removing them. That would be a really big help and help all of us stay safe here in town, so. Yeah, that's it, council, thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay, guess we can adjourn the meeting.
We did it before.
In, in inverse proportion to the length of the past.
I know.
Thank you.
It's because I like us all her big stuff.
They really go. Alright, this could be a quick.